Where did you see that it's?
Hi, Bob.
Okay, Mr. Mills, you should be good to go.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order and we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. If we could stand and find a flag, I have one in my little office here. So I'm good if we could stand and. Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Let's have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you very much. Hold on while I have to exit full screen so that I can see what I've got on the agenda here. Okay, good. So, opening comments. Welcome, everybody, to our monthly meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do want to hear from our citizens and there is time for public comment prior to action items on the agenda. We ask speakers identify themselves in their home district. We ask that your comments are limited to three minutes. In order to provide equity to all speakers and to ensure our meeting is reasonable in its length, if you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide lead by hand materials. I guess you can email that or drop it by the board office and the board will review it then. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as the time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your board member or administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening?
I move.
I move.
So that was Mr. Rubin that made the motion and Larry, you had moved too. Can you second?
Sure, second.
We have a second from Mr. Grove and we're going to do roll call again. We gotta, we have to try to remember that each of these is going to have to be a roll call vote. So let's roll call Wesley Mills' eye.
It's mine.
Chris, you better not.
And I didn't hear Pudd, is Pudd online?
It looks like she's on. Let's see, she's got to be unmuted.
You are.
Yeah, I see her name.
Well, I'm here.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, I hear you, Pudd.
All right, I, by the way.
Oh, thanks, Pudd. That's where we're waiting. Motion carries, thank you very much. So we have an agenda. Mr. Grove, have you had opportunity to review the bills?
I have. There's one glaring number that might need to be explained. It's in the grounds expenses. It's 293% over budget. So I think Shannon may be able to explain that.
Yes, out of that line, we actually pull our capital pay-go monies. So we do have the revenue to cover that. We just have to, Stacy has to do a journal entry to reconcile that line. So that's why the difference.
Sounds good. Everything else was lovely.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Grove. I appreciate it. Moving on to the warrants, paying the bills. Is there a motion to approve the warrants?
So move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rubin. All in favor, I. Wesley Mills' eye.
Rachel Bynum, I.
Lucian Meyer, I.
Chris Hube, an I.
And so moved. Madam Superintendent, your updates.
I'm sure. So before I get into my actual items here, I do want to just remind everyone that we're operating under the electronic guidelines put forth through our emergency ordinance provided by the county. And they did extend that. So that's in the call to order. If anybody wants to look at that, those materials are there to review. So that's why we can operate this way and we're getting the hang of it by now. So this is good. All right, so as far as the COVID-19 update, the first thing I want to bring up is the length of school term waiver. This is the waiver being granted by the state to allow us to still promote children and verify the school year completed, even though we know we didn't get the length of time needed for seat time requirements. So I'm happy to say the state did approve that waiver. So we're all set to continue operating with the distance learning plans we have. They are working really well. I know students at the elementary school are now working on their projects for the end of the term and the high school classes are wrapping up as well. So I'm very pleased overall with how that's been going. All right. Any questions about that waiver?
None for me.
Okay, if you can click back to those documents. The next one is the REC broadband support letter. We were very pleased last week to see the Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution to partner with Rappahannock Electric Cooperative to work on exploring ways to expand broadband infrastructure in the county. This is not a new challenge by any means, but it's one that has become glaringly obvious and exasperated during this time of distance learning. So this letter is just in support of those efforts and to, you know, put the hurrah of the school division there as well and see if there's anything we can do to help. And Mr. Mills, we don't need a vote to put this forward, just kind of general consensus because you and I sign off on this.
Yeah, it'd be good to get the consensus of the board. And so board members, if you don't mind just saying your name and whether you support or do not support this letter.
Very good support.
Yeah.
Rachel Bynum supports the letter.
Lucian Meyer supports.
Chris Hube supports.
And Wesley Mills supports. I think it's good to make sure that they understand our perspective and the challenges we've had over the past two months and how, you know, how we're just trying to provide equity to students as far as their learning opportunities. So that was what's driving us to make sure that they understand our support for what it is they're doing. And so I appreciate the consensus of the board. We'll take care of that right away.
Excellent, yes, we'll send that off. Thank you very much. Now finally, for a COVID update, lots of questions about what we're doing for the senior class. So we have a special edition newsletter to go out after this meeting that will showcase the class of 2020. And there are their wonderful photos.
It is beautiful.
Are they beautiful? They look great.
And we will scroll down to recent happenings, things that have occurred already. The cap and gown pickup was a huge success. It really made people feel reconnected. The seniors and their families just really loved it and had a good time seeing the administration and of course, the Panther giving them ice cream. And it was a really great event. So there'll be more sort of events like that coming up. We scroll down. The lights for our seniors for the Bull Run District, Be the Light was a great success as well. I saw wonderful pictures on Facebook of different homes being lit up as well as some beautiful photographs from up on Old Rag showing what Rappahannock looks like on a normal night. And then during that timeframe, how many lights lit up. It was awesome. So hopefully we can catch.
Shannon, I think that was on Red Oak Mountain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Red Oak, yes. Thank you for.
Don't leave my home place away.
It was beautiful. If you keep scrolling, after that, we have some ongoing and upcoming events. Of course, we are doing the Class of 2020 card drive and are already seeing quite a few cards coming in. We do have special personalized letters for the board based on your district that we will get to you. And then you can write your own personalized message on those and sign them. We can take care of that. And we're doing some on behalf of the school as well. So we definitely want to show the class of 2020 how much we're thinking of them and care about them right now. Commit to be Fit is doing a Step for Seniors initiative. And this is wonderful. You've seen the amazing success that we've had with the community Step Up for Hunger Challenge and then Step for Heroes, Commit to be Fit, has really gotten the community very involved with all that. So now it's going to be Step for Seniors. So we're going to see how many steps we can collectively accumulate for our seniors to show them how much we are thinking of them. And then there is going to be a scholarship and athletic awards ceremony, kind of. It's to be similar to the cap and gown distribution event. So this one will be a drive-through, same thing, where each of the seniors will get their athletic awards. They'll get their scholarship awards and whatever else they have left to give out at that time. Students really do need to know if they've gotten their scholarships and those types of things so they can be able to work through admissions and everything with the colleges. So we have to get that information out. Let's see, if you keep scrolling, we have senior athletics. These showcases went out on Facebook and we had a wonderful response to those. Thank you to Cameron Wayland and Courtney Atkins. They just came out beautiful. So we're including those again in our newsletter, so it's all in one place. Great. Okay, and now let's talk about our graduation plans. Amy, has Mr. Swindler joined us? Okay, I was going to let Mr. Swindler go through this. We're just having a technical difficulty getting him in. Hold on one second. Okay. No, I got him. I got it. All right, while Mr. Swindler is logging in to explain the graduation plans, I will say that I did have a state call this morning with the Department of Education and also some folks from the governor's office. They are finalizing some guidance for schools to, you know, determine graduation solid plans over the summer, including summer programs, events, summer school, as well as some reopening considerations for us. So that's why we haven't gotten out too much definitive finalized answers because a lot depends on how the governor's phase-in approach for reopening Virginia goes. So depending on the success of those programs, that's really going to dictate to us how we're able to proceed. So for graduation, we do have a few different scenarios. It will look very similar for reopening over the summer as we have our work group based around the new guidance from the state, which I do expect to come out within the next three weeks. And when we do have that, we'll put together our own little work group to plan how that looks for us relative to our situation and our demographics and things. And again, it will be dependent upon data and how well those phases actually work. So that's going to really dictate how we're going to be able to open. We are very hopeful that we can open on time under normal circumstances. However, it looks like this is going to be pretty slow-going and very data-driven. So we're going to need to watch closely the state's guidance.
Yeah.
Let's see. He's getting it. Okay, here comes Mr. Swindler. All right, I see his name popping up.
I got Mr. Swindler staring at me.
All right, Mr. Swindler, perfect timing, you're on.
Okay.
Going to talk about the graduation plans.
Gotcha. All right, well, boy, this was perfect timing. First of all, hello, everybody. I hope everybody's doing well. Thanks for letting me be a part of the meeting. The graduation plans that we put together, when I say we, this was based on the POG team worked together, the profile of a graduate team and a few others. And we also took into account a great deal, the survey results that we got from our parents and our seniors. And first going to the survey, the overwhelming response was, you know, we had put out there, would you prefer a virtual event or a drive-in type of event or as close to a traditional event as you can get? And the overwhelming response was, we would like as close to a traditional event as we can get. So we put together, we tossed around some ideas. Obviously, there's a lot going on out there in other communities. We put together three scenarios. Scenario one, we know, I mean, we knew a week ago that it's virtually, well, highly unlikely and it's impossible at this point. But we still, you know, we want everybody to know that if we can't do it, we will. Scenario two is basically a traditional graduation ceremony, simply limiting the number of guests. We could invite the seniors and four, we tossed around four to six guests per senior. Unfortunately, as a result of the cabinet meeting we had today and some of the information that's been shared by the state, it's going to be tough. I think even if we get into phase two, if I recall correctly from what Dr. Grimsley briefed us on, even if we get into phase two, there's still, phase two still says no more than 50 people in a gathering. And this would clearly be more than 50 people in one place. So the idea was to use the gym to let every senior have five, like I said, four to six guests. I felt like we had enough space in the gym where we could put those groups socially distant from each other. Again, unfortunately, it's kind of a moot point at this fee. So scenario three is where if you've seen other schools do this, every senior and their family would come in, they'd have an appointment. We would run it through the course of the day, probably looking at Saturday, July the 11th, start in the morning. And where each graduate comes in with their family, one at a time into the gym. They're presented with their diploma, they're have the opportunity to take pictures. They're taken back out to their car, then the next family comes in. If we are still in phase one limitations, that would limit any group to 10 or less. If that's the case, what we would probably do is just have three staff members in the gym. That would allow seven more, which could be a senior plus six guests. And then we'd have other people outside on the property, you know, escorting the seniors and their families in and out. Now, Dr. Grimsley, I know this potential scenario four, we talked about starting yesterday. Is that on here? May I discuss that?
I'm sure you can. It's anything's under consideration. But again, it's all based on kind of how successful these first couple phases are over the summer. But go ahead.
Exactly. Well, this late-breaking scenario, which when I say late-breaking, I mean yesterday morning, there have been some other school systems that have done what they call drive-in graduations. I think when this first came to my attention, Danny Pond, our guidance counselor, apparently there's a drive-in theater in Kernsville, Virginia, and some schools are going to be using that. There was also, there's been a school in Pennsylvania that's doing the same thing. The premise is basically the seniors and their parents and their guests, they come in a car and they stay in the car, like a drive-in theater. And just the way I could see this happening for us is if we set up a stage like at the entrance to the gym. It's in that tan brick area that's framed by the two doors to the entrance to the gym. And then we could use the parking lot and we could designate spaces for cars where the cars would be parked like in a semicircle, basically from the concession stand all the way as far to the left as you could get. And I believe that with three rows, we'd have enough room where we could get 60 cars, assuming 60 graduates. They could bring whomever they like, as long as they're all in one car. They would stay in their car. We can use either the PA system from Panther Stadium or this is what a local church is doing. They actually have a radio broadcaster where they pipe the sound system into the radio broadcaster and they tell everybody what to tune their radio in their car to, whether, you know, 88.1 or there's apparently some frequency that is available. And then they could actually hear, you know, we could do with the remarks, we could do the valedictorian speech, the salutatorian speech. And then when it came time for the, when it comes time for the diploma presentations, my thought would be to just have, call out each graduate. When their name is called, they get out of their car, they walk up to the stage, they go across it, they're presented their diploma, they take their picture, they go back to the car and then you do the next one. And that piece might take a little bit of a time. But the night, I think the thing that we feel to people about that is, one of the things that people don't like about scenario three is that they're not, there's no audience. There's, you know, they're not, they're just doing this with their immediate family members. And the nice thing about the drive-in scenario is that it allows, there'll be other people there. And, you know, people will blow their horns or yell out the windows or whatever. Again, a lot of this is contingent on what we will or will not be allowed to do at the time. I suspect that even if we're still in phase one or even if we're in the situation where we are right now, we could do scenario three. So we know we can do that. And the date we're going, the dates that you see there, those are the dates that our survey respondents picked. That was the majority choice was for that particular weekend, which is the weekend after July the 4th. So that's where we are with graduation. As I've told the graduates, we had a wonderful day this, not yesterday, but Monday last week, when the graduates and their families, most of them came and picked up their caps and gowns. And it really went well. It was a drive-through event and told them all that we're definitely going to be having graduation in July. And what we told them is we're going to do as much as we're legally allowed to do. So that's where we are. We're going to, we have another event similar to that coming up next Thursday at 2:00, May the 21st, where we're going to be giving out the scholarships to the scholarship winners as well as the end-of-year sports awards, all of which they traditionally go to seniors. And this year, they all went to seniors. And then any academic awards from our teachers that seniors won, we'll present those as well. And we'll be inviting those students. And again, hopefully by then, we can have something, at least, like I said, we're telling them right now, this is the date. The details are still in the mix. And I suspect that we'll probably be working on these two scenarios, maybe even a third one if it comes out of the box, up until like the middle of June. And maybe by then, we'll know more. But we definitely feel like we can do something at a minimum. I feel like we can do that scenario three event where one family at a time comes in and gets their diploma and gets their pictures and do that on Friday, July the 10th. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Swindler. Thank you for sharing these. And we thought it was important to put out all three scenarios to show the, you know, the variance in thought process as well. Of course, we want to do scenario one as much as possible. However, it really does look almost impossible. But we do want them to know that, you know, we have listened to the survey results. These are the three scenarios that came up and we'll go with whatever we can. The drive-in again was a new one and we'll wait state guidance. Do any board members have questions for Mr. Swindler about the Class of 2020 plans and ceremonies and events?
It's just such a moving target. I'm glad to see that there are multiple scenarios being considered because it's a moving target, as you know.
Absolutely.
I think I heard Larry. I think I heard Larry. Larry, did you have something?
Mr. Grove, did you have anything to ask?
No, it sounds good. I was wondering, Jimmy, is there any thought given to maybe using a venue like at Eldon Farm or someplace where you could be on a hill and have that be out, you know, an outside kind of event?
We haven't thought of that using, there's in discussion, it's come up. We've talked about a couple places locally. The preference that we seem to be getting, or not seem to be, that we are getting from our seniors and our parents is they really want us to try to do something at the school.
That makes sense. That's fine. That's good.
Anyone else? No? Thanks for creating options. I think it's great for us to plan this way to escalate. So good job.
Thank you.
Excellent. And this newsletter will go out tomorrow morning. We wanted to present it to the board first, so you heard it here first. But really great work. I want to commend Holly Jenkins for her amazing public relations and digital communications work that she does in putting all this together for us and making it in a concise and beautiful format. So thank you for that, Holly. All right, Amy, if you want to go to the next item. All right, budget update. So we do have a bottom line from the supervisors as of yesterday evening. So they did go forward, as we had discussed last time, with putting about $185,000 into contingency. So we do have a lot less to work with. We also have these numbers final from the state revenue. We had at first projected about a $72,000 shortfall in revenue. And Amy, if you can scroll to the bottom, you can see the new numbers, only $48,596. So that gave us a little bit more breathing room there. Also, we found out that we received $145,000 in potential CARES Act funding. Now, that's very similar to the other federal funds that we received. So it's the same application process we use. And then it's reimbursement-based. Now, we know that a lot of our response efforts since March 13th are reimbursable through CARES Act funding. However, we do have until, we have an, I think, an 18-month timeframe with which we have to reimburse those funds. So what I would recommend, if we can swing it, since we've had to keep distance learning going and it's become a general operations issue now, is that we try to absorb as much of the COVID response cost as possible in our current budget, since we had realized savings in other areas. And we save our CARES Act funding for the expenses we know are going to occur based on the scenarios we're seeing for reopening, like staggered schedules and double bus runs and additional feeding programs and additional staffing intervention specialists, things like that. And I'm sure there's going to be a whole lot of unforeseen costs as we deal with this with reopening phases. It would make me feel a lot better if we had the $145,000 available for next year to use, not knowing what the county is going to do with those contingency funds. So I wanted to float that by the board and make sure you were okay with doing that. And I think it'll give us a little bit more breathing room next year, next fiscal year, especially if we deal with some of that. So thoughts or questions?
That's a good plan. Good plan.
No, that's fine.
That can carry over.
Yes.
We should definitely carry that over. A lot of costs.
That makes sense.
Okay, I wanted to be sure you were okay with that. So what I will do is I will not do, Stacy and I will not request a supplemental appropriation for this fiscal year at the end of FY '20. We will calculate to be sure we're okay with end of year. We think we will be pretty well okay because there were other funds that we were able to transfer and things to take care of our response efforts. Plus, we had unused funds from the savings realized. So we'll kind of get that number and then whatever's left over, of course, we'll return back to the county. So as we build the FY '21 budget for you to approve in June, at your June regular meeting, it will have the CARES Act funding fully appropriated there. So it'll be the final budget.
And we'll notify the board of what we're doing?
Yeah, well, through our appropriation, we'll just let Gary Curry know that he will have to appropriate that, those funds in FY '21 instead of FY '20.
Because that should be formal, right?
Yeah, it will be. And we send the adopted school board budget with all the allocations done to them anyway, so they know.
Shannon, this is Wes. Are you done? Are you ready for question?
I am ready for questions. Yeah, that's it in a nutshell.
Yeah, so we just found out last night what the supervisor's intentions were going to be for sure. And have we had time to determine, you know, based on the priorities that the board had established, how we're going to, you know, how we're going to manage our current plan for the 2021 year? Have we already gotten that far or do we need more time before we're going to be able to figure out how we're shuffling that deck?
Well, here's the, here's what we know. We protected board priorities as much as possible. As you know, the large-ticket item is the staff raises that the county and the state withheld the revenue supplement for that. So we have worked the numbers and based on savings and staffing and some cuts we were able to make, we're. We're still able, under the current budget, to go ahead and give everybody a step. To at least realize their year of experience and give them the step increase with that to start out the year. Um, so at the very least, everyone will get that. And then as we get a better picture of how revenue's doing, what the state does, what the county does, mid-year we we can reassess. And then if we're able to release additional funding for that purpose, we will. But at this time, there's just so many unknowns that we may have to deal with. Makes me feel a lot better with the CARES Act funding being built in. Um, but I foresee a lot of additional expenses that we didn't budget for in the priorities initially. And also, we did protect the second preschool, so that's going to happen, the numbers will be low, which they'll probably have to be. Anyway, with the new social distancing guidance that we're seeing, there could be a potential for no more than 10 or 12 kids in every class. So, yes, so that's going to really um, be a an interesting scenario to plan for, and it will definitely have some unforeseen costs. So as we project those out and run scenarios based on the guidance from the state. Uh, we'll have a better picture for the budget and we'll have to move things around, but the CARES Act will help us get some of the immediate work done. And then mid-year is the goal, by December, I hope to have a good idea of what the contingency funds will be released, what state funds will be released, and then what we can do for our staff. As well, and then whatever other expenses we may need funding for.
And if we can communicate with the staff, they'll know that that's our plan, I mean.
Absolutely.
And yeah, it would be good for them to know that that's our intention. And as best we can, we will stick with our priorities the way they were originally.
Yes.
Yeah, good.
Shannon?
Yes, sir?
With, has anybody, any consideration been given to uh, with the enormous amount of cleaning that's going to be needed to do throughout the year, I would assume?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to maybe increasing the the custodial staff by one or two uh, positions?
Yes, that is definitely a consideration for additional hours, um, or additional staffing. Or the cleaning, even contracts and additional supplies and equipment. To be able to handle the level of sanitization that we have to do under the guidance, so those are all being uh, carefully considered. That that's a great use of CARES Act funding, in fact, that's one of the permissible uses. However, there's also FEMA funding that we are um, coordinating with Mr. Curry, because we can either apply for FEMA aid as well for things like that and PPE, emergency. Types of equipment and things that we might need. So uh, we're coordinating with Mr. Curry to see if uh, we should put in an application as a county. It does not look like the county has put forth an application yet, and if they do not, we can apply certainly for some of that stuff. Um, so we will go after any any funding we can to support what we have to do.
Good. That's good.
I have another question, Shannon.
Yes, sir?
So is Wes, so um, the, we we've been doing a a great service by feeding uh, so many. Uh, but the thing I'm wondering, and of course, I'm 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 actually, I guess I've made an assumption that the CARE Act will help uh, help us with the financing of that. But um, so that's one question, but what what's going to happen um, when the school year ends? Are we gonna, are we going to try to continue this until we're through the, through the uh, you know, the reaction to pandemic? Or or what what is, or until school resumes and the children have options? Or do you have any idea how that will roll?
Oh, we have, yes, we're not going to try, we will continue to feed students, that's non-negotiable for us. Um, so what we've already done is um, work with the state. Uh, the state has applied for a continued USDA waiver to cover beyond June 30th. Throughout the summer for those schools like us who didn't quite qualify for the summer feeding programs.
Right.
So hopefully, we are very optimistic that that will come through to give us additional reimbursement. And then if we roll over our CARES Act funding, yes, that's going to be a significant use of it over the summer. To make sure we can take care of our staffing and costs associated with that, because we did have a a loss that we will need to backfill with the end of year, uh, fiscal year 20 monies for the cafeteria.
Right, and a lot of time to the, so, and it's taking uh, staff to prepare uh, all of this uh, that gets distributed. It's a major effort, and of course, they're going to need to continue to work at that level of effort throughout the summer. And uh, so it's it's uh, we, you know, it's it it's very important, it's had a huge impact, I believe. And uh, that that's why I'm asking, I just want to make.
Absolutely, and in fact, I will add to that, that we've already told cafeteria staff and workers that the feeding program over the summer above and beyond, we're working um, working out some hazard hero pay. The state really encourages us to do that with these frontline workers, who especially with the feeding programs. Uh, because they are so uh, you know, so beneficial and so crucial. Uh, so we will work with our cafeteria workers to be sure they're taken care of, it's a tremendous amount of work. And we appreciate everyone who's been volunteering their time to help deliver the meals and and prepare them, it's just been an incredible effort. And everyone is still gung ho to keep it going, so.
And and of course, we we're using some of our uh, bus driving staff for delivery. And they'll they'll also still be tasked during a time of the year that they're usually not. Uh, or I'm sure you've thought of all these things, but it's just the, it it's, what's what's happening right now that's, you know, and and Mandy's orchestrated quite a bit here. It it takes a lot of people to make this work, and uh, that's why I was wondering if it's going through the summer, it has, you know, there's the, there's a lot that has to be, that has to be maintained, that's all, that's all.
Absolutely, yes, sir, and we have every intention to do that, um, and it looks like we have the perfect staff to do it, they are heroes, true heroes in my mind, so. Um, they're doing a wonderful work, so thank you.
Yep, yeah, well, thanks for uh, letting us know about that. And uh, so anything else uh, that uh, we had changed as far as the last time we had talked in our budget? Uh, that as far as what we're funding and not funding, anything significant that you can uh, recall that's an impact from the money not coming to us?
No, um, and principals are still letting us know what they can um, live without and what they absolutely need, so we're we're about there. So Stacy is recalculating for a new um, proposal for you in June that you can adopt. Um, but basically, your priorities will be uh, completely protected, other than, like I said, the full 3% plus step, which we intended to do this year. Um, so we'll start off with the step and hopefully get as much back as we can um, to be able to do more, but we'll know mid-year.
Great.
Shannon, I had a question about about technology um, going forward for the for the kids. And and I think, and my family is included in the group that is making do with what we have at home. Um, but it's not going to work if we have to go through the fall and through a longer period of time. And I'm wondering if we are going to be offering either, first of all, how will the, how will the laptops be returned to school? But also wondering if we're going to be more broadly offering um, technology to families, you know, considering in 20, in 2020, 21. If we're going to have a more, be able to, be able to, again, like robustly offer technology and laptops, tablets, whatever people need. If we're going to continue with some online learning.
Absolutely, absolutely, so um, we are very fortunate, the work of Dr. Dr. Bolt and her staff in the IT department have done an amazing job. Getting us close to two to one already. Um, so we were able to distribute devices to over half our students already. Um, so that leaves about another half that may or may not need them. Uh, but yes, as we kind of look at the scenarios of reopening and the very uh, real possibility that we will be doing. Distance learning in some format or another um, come fall. Yeah, we will need to reassess and be sure all our students have what they need to be able to provide equitable instruction. Um, and that's something that, again, why we're so excited about the county partnership with REC. Um, to try to expand the infrastructure, because that's our biggest issue right now, is the lack of um, broadband infrastructure. Um, and that's across the Commonwealth with all rural rural communities especially. Uh, so hopefully that um, will get rolling, it's, you know, I'm sure a couple of years before we'll see much of that work done. But um, as come fall, to answer your question, yes, yes, we will be reassessing the digital needs, we do have a very healthy technology budget. Um, and if we roll over the um, the funds for CARES Act, we'll have additional funding to support that. And we have some local foundations who have already approached us to help with that as well, if we need it, if we need it, so I think we'll be in great shape.
Good, so we'll have enough, if if every student needed a device, for example, in the fall, we, could we have enough for that?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, good.
I heard another board member chiming in.
Shannon, can you remind me when we, when we do end of year? Uh, disbursements and so forth?
Well, we we went, we did away with that, so now what we do, um, because of the accrual accounting that we've been doing with the county. Uh, we let the books roll through and just be sure we're invoicing appropriately, um, all FY20 funds and that all FY21. Payments go to those encumbrances, so it's basically keeping two, two books open until we close out the entire year. So that did away with the big spend out meeting and all of that, there's no need to really do that.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
Yeah.
But obviously, we're going, there's going to be a a surplus at the end of the year.
Yeah, so whenever we close out the final invoices from June 30th. Uh, whatever's left over at that point in time, we'll have a good idea, probably by, you know, September. Then that's when the county will, you know, get their projection for for the rollover amount.
Yeah.
Um, so before we, before we leave this, um, thanks for all the work on it, uh, Shannon.
Absolutely.
And your team, and uh, and obviously, you know. It's good for people to know our intentions and that they have not changed and that we're going to try to write it as soon as we can, if we can, depending upon what comes through. So probably before we leave, I'll just roll through the board members, see if there's any final questions. Ms. Martin, did you have any final questions on this?
No, as far as I'm concerned, it's a minor miracle, we can give a step.
Great, great. Mr. Rubin, any any comments or questions?
No, just thank you for all the hard work, Shannon.
Yes, sir.
Um, Rachel, any final uh, comments or questions?
I hope that we can come through with more than the step if possible, but thank you for finding that, at least.
Yeah, I concur. Uh, Mr. Grove, any, anything else?
I think we're on a roll, I I, we're probably better off than most.
Right, right, I think you're right. Yep, all right, Shannon, thank you very much, I guess we're ready to move on.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Um, so the next, are you, are you gonna, are you done uh, completely?
Yes, sir, I'm all done.
Okay, okay, I can show, I'm just making sure. Next thing, well, the next thing on the agenda is public comment, so at this point, uh, our clerk is uh, is managing the the home window. So if there's a member of the public that's in the session. Um, I I do see a few, if there's a member that's in the session. Um, uh, if you could raise your hand, do you know how to raise your hand, I hope you do. Uh, there are controls within this window that allow you.
Just if they raise their hand. I'm sorry.
Did anybody raise their hand yet? This is a time for public comment.
I have a report from Headwaters that I could read during public comment, if.
That'd be fun, do you want to get started? And if anybody in the public uh, wishes to speak, if you could um, use the raise your hand thing and uh, that's in the Zoom application. And let us know, uh, we'll recognize you as soon as uh, Mrs. Bynum is done.
Yeah, I I did meet um, virtually with the Headwaters representatives and um, they met, the scholarship committee met a long meeting this month virtually. Um, they will award 26 scholarships to graduating seniors, and then they also had a record number of scholarship renewals, 20 scholarship renewals are also awarded to RCPS grads. Um, so it's a total of $150,000 that will benefit our alumni. And um, as as was mentioned before, that there'll be a drive through award ceremony. They also have officially canceled the Taste of Rappahannock for the fall. That's all I have for my Headwaters report.
Thank you, Rachel.
Wes, I've got a Mountain Vista report as well.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Sorry, Larry, this is Lenny, uh, Jono, with Headwaters.
Hi, Lenny.
Hi. I I first want to say thank you for all you guys are doing, I know this is crazy times, I've got five of those students here at home. And you guys are are working around the clock, and we really appreciate everything that's going on. And all the good teaching that's still happening out there, so thank you for all, all your input and all your guidance and all your leadership out there. Um, I just wanted to say that I think, I'm not sure if I heard Rachel correctly, but it's $103,000 that we're, that Headwaters is is going to be giving out this year, not 150, I'm not sure if that.
Okay.
Little bit different there, so.
I had, I had thought that the, that the, the renewals were included in the number.
There's 53,000, or sorry, 50, yeah, $53,000 in um, in senior scholarships and $50,000 in renewals.
Okay, I wrote the 50 three times.
That would be nice if we had.
Shoot.
That's a good way to do it, Rachel.
Yeah, yeah, oh, there were three 50s on my note card.
Donation for that, Rachel, we won't turn you down.
Oh, I'm a little hard up these days.
So.
When I, when I come to get tomato plants, I'll get 15 instead of 20.
We're very excited that our, we we started a campaign to um, to fund scholarships, and we've had a good response from the community, even with all that's going on with the financial shakeups. But um, we are, we are optimistic that we will reach our $50,000. With the Doing Way of Taste, which is our major fundraiser, it's going to be uh, tight for us this year, but we felt it was important to reward the seniors who have had such a hard senior year. So that we wanted to um, give out the same amount of scholarships that we gave out last year, so our board felt that was very important, went ahead and and did that also.
Is there, Lenny, is there a way that we can publicize who's got, who got what from who?
Yes, actually, Larry, um, next, we're having the the scholarship um, award ceremony will be the 21st, like you all heard, and we're excited to be there. It turns out, the vast majority of the 26 kids that are our scholars, that were Headwater scholars, are also scholars that are going to be recognized in other areas. So we're going to have that ceremony, and then the following, um, I think Holly Jenkins is going to be there to take pictures for us. And then the following week, on the 28th, there will be a spread in the newspaper that will cover and will, will list all the scholarship and have their pictures again, the scholarship.
Wonderful.
And and then, and then also the recipients, we don't have the pictures of the um, renewals, but the renewal, it will also list the renewals that are all past RCHS alumni.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
And I assume Rap News is supporting that?
They are, it's uh, they're giving us a great deal on it, but we are paying for that two page spread.
Oh, wow.
Possibly three page if needed.
Yeah.
But they assure us it's a great deal, so, and Headwaters is.
We need them to play in business too, I think.
They've gave, given us a lot of good publicity in the past few weeks to help us get our word out there too, so we're happy to help them out if needed.
Yeah.
If we can, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Lynn.
Thank you.
Larry, I think you were getting ready to give a Mountain Vista.
Right. We we met virtually, uh, when was it, Shannon, Wednesday, last week, Thursday last week? Anyway, uh, I I prefer this virtual meeting when we have to go to Front Royal at eight o'clock in the morning.
Agreed with that.
All right, uh, we maintained our our eight slots, and we were also given a slot at large that will not cost us anything.
Oh, wow.
The budget, yeah, that's a good, so now we have nine kids involved with uh, with the uh, Mountain Vista program. The budgeting, we are not going to have to pay anymore. Uh, they did some fancy footwork and uh, it looks like the budget is going to be pretty close to what we had anticipated before. But we had a um. For lack of better term, uh, we had had some funds that we could adjust and move into this next year's budget. And so there won't be an increase for the individual school system, so that's a good thing.
That's a. Great.
That's it.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to share anything tonight? Amy, can you tell me, uh, do you see anybody else?
I saw Jimmy's fan.
I do not see anyone else, Mr. Mills.
Did we receive any communications? I see Mr. Swindler, hi.
Could I, could I just add one public comment?
Sure, Jimmy, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Jimmy Swindler, Stonewall Hawthorne, I just want to publicly thank Headwaters, particularly with the $50,000 in renewal scholarships. I can tell you from personal experience, there's fewer things that are more distressing than to talk to a former student that you see at a game a year or two after they've left. And finally, ask them how's school going and to hear the response, well, I had to take a semester off because I didn't have enough money this year. And I have heard that probably a half a dozen times in the last three years. I think those renewal scholarships are so important, and thank you, Headwaters. I think those renewal scholarships are so important and thank you, Headwaters, for, for seeing that importance as well and giving out that money, that's huge.
Thank you, Jimmy. Let you, let you know that that was, that was a, expressly what we talked about at our meeting too, at the board meeting, that that's, they, they felt like it's not fair to just send these seniors out there. And obviously, the scholarships are front loaded on the seniors that, that graduate, but then. When you get them out there by the juniors and seniors in college, the college knows they have them. And then if they're not, if they take a gap year or something like that, they're highly unlikely to finish, so we're, we're really. At that and let you know that the board is very heavily invested in having those kids not just start school, but finish college.
Thank you.
That's great.
That's great.
All right. Is there anyone else from the public?
Hey, Lenny, what's going on?
The dog concur. And, and were there any?
I can hear that dog from my house.
Amy, were there any communications of any other type that were provided as public comment for us to share?
No, I did not receive anything else.
Thank you very much. All right, then we'll be, we'll call that, that, that part of the agenda done and move on. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is June the ninth, if I remember right. And at this particular point, we would be doing the same format as we're doing today. Unless something dramatic changes, so, so get the word out about that. And at this point, we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session. I believe Larry's going to read this motion to us and as soon as we get back. Go ahead.
I move the board convene into closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider. The appointment of staff for professional positions, resignation to professional positions, retirement of a professional. And classified position, renew, review the staff list for all positions in two thousand and twenty one. School year and discuss superintendent evaluation pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one one A one.
Thank you, Larry. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Rubin, all in favor, aye? Please state.
Aye.
Aye.
I, Rachel Bynum.
Thanks.
Larry Grove, aye.
Chris Rubin, aye.
Thanks.
Suzanne Meyer, aye.
Wesley Mills, aye, so, so, so moved. So if you want to, if you want to hang out, here's what's going to happen, we're, the board members are going to leave this Zoom session. We're going to go to a closed session, Zoom session. We will then return to this particular Zoom session. And we will certify and we will have at least one motion concerning the, some personnel changes. And then we will adjourn, so I would say we're going to be gone. How long are we going to be gone, do you think, Shannon?
I hope not long.
Ten minutes at the most? I think we'll be gone ten minutes at the most, how about that?
All right.
There you go.
Right, so the board members are gonna go find your other hyperlink that takes you to the other Zoom session. And that you're going to have to close this one out.
We click.
Do we leave this one?
Yeah, you're going to have to leave it and come back to it.
Oh, lordy, good luck.
So we have to close, we have to close this and then come back to it?
Yes.
All right.
Hello.
I was trying to see participants again. Here we are, five participants. So we have Ms. Bynum is back, Ms. Grimsley, Mr. Grove. He's back. The water's running.
So I'm excited for Nick to get to go to governor's school. He's one of our people.
Oh, cool.
That's exciting.
Hooray!
He has a friend that he grew up with, who also grew up on a farm in, up in, in Percival, near Percival, and he's gonna also be going to the other campus of Mountain Vista. They've known each other since they were like days old, so.
Rachel, how are they gonna do that?
Oh, they're gonna, they're, they're gonna, they're not gonna be at the same school, but they'll be, if they ever actually get together, the two campuses do get together sometimes.
But I mean, how, how are they gonna do the governor's school?
I don't know. I assume they'll do it by Zoom or something. You should know, you're on the board.
No, no, it's a different governor's school.
No, he's part of, they're part of Mountain Vista in.
Oh, I thought you were talking about this summer, I'm sorry.
Clark County.
Oh, I do know how we do that.
No, I think that the summer governor's school is canceled, but no, this is a rising 10th grader who's also.
No, I thought you were talking about summer.
No, there's no summer governor's school happening.
All right, we're still waiting for Ms. Meyer to come back in. I think we have everyone else. One, two, three, four, yes, we need to get Ms. Meyer back. Let's give her a minute.
I'm just so happy this worked. Yay!
Yeah, it's been working great. You can be glad that while Ms. Meyer's account comes up, that it originally shows up with the mute on, because we probably wouldn't want to hear what she's gonna tell us when she, she's been fiddling around trying to get the thing back up, right?
Is Chris back?
Chris is here, yeah. I see him. There she is.
There you go.
Okay. Mr. Rubin, can you hear us okay? Ms. Meyer, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. All right, we have just come out of closed session. We need to certify that only things related to the motion that took us in were the things that we discussed during closed session. Can we, can we go through roll call? Larry?
Larry Grove certifies.
Ms. Meyer?
Lucian Meyer certifies.
Ms. Bynum?
Rachel Bynum certifies.
Mr. Rubin?
Chris Huben certifies.
Wesley Mills certifies. During closed session, we received resignations from some staff, the hiring of some other staff positions which we can close the loop on with the press another time, but to be expected at the end of a, end of a school year, some retirements. And so at this time, we'll entertain a motion regarding the accepting of the personnel report.
Go move.
We have a motion from Mr. Grove. Is there a second? We have a second from Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye. Roll call.
Larry Grove, aye.
Lucian Meyer, aye. There we go.
Ms. Bynum?
Rachel Bynum, aye.
Mr. Rubin, aye.
Wesley Mills, aye. And so ordered. And we also, just for the record, we also did conclude Dr. Grimsley's assessment, and she had an exemplary year. Her, her concluding figure, the way they count points, is 40 points out of 40. So the board is very pleased with her performance and, and very much desires to keep her here in County. So that, that's was discussed during closed session, and at this point, I believe we're done. Is there anything left hanging? Dr. Grimsley?
No, sir. That's all we have.
We have a motion to adjourn. Anybody?
Chris Huben, so moved.
Mr. Rubin's motion. Second, can we, can we roll call that one? Mr. Grove?
Larry Grove, aye.
Ms. Meyer?
Lucian Meyer, aye.
Ms. Bynum?
Rachel Bynum, aye.
Mr. Rubin?
Chris Huben, aye.
Wesley Mills, aye. And so moved, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Shannon?
Yes, sir.
Thank Amy for all that work.
Oh, yeah, thank Amy. Thanks for what you did.
Well, I'm better than last time.
Yeah.
All right, everybody stay safe. I'm gone.
We're gonna get better. All right, bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, Shannon. Oh, thank the Lord. All right, so I just need to, where's end the meeting? Right here.